You know, after you even have a clean little public conference, but now I'm gonna pray that that's not the credit to the jury. And then, you know, some church things happening in all over this country. These countries that what we're going out. What I want to say is, they don't do anything all that bad. It's easy for them to think that I'm not saying it's me to try. So we can look at him and thank him and what he has done and going with him in the future. The thing about the side is, thank you, you, the Ukraine, the United States, they didn't turn it. And you can move the side. For great father, you couldn't pray to thank you, you know, of course. Thank you, Father, for that, for that, for that. We realize, we come here, we could have accomplished everything. We realize that you made us more than that, Father. Father, I pray for this week, we're not going to do this. That's how we do it, Father. We've been defending this path. I pray big year again, and focus this way. I pray for one time, I'm looking forward to it. Father, I just pray for peace and understanding, Father. We realize that this still provided now, and that this is celebrating, make sure that that's celebrated. Whether it's God or Father, that war, Father. I should bless the left wing, Father, at home. We want our state, we want the government, you know, Father. I pray for this, Father. I pray for our workers, I pray for the nation, Father. And through Father's name, your prayer, Father, because we realize that he won't control that. He will tell what they say. Father, I think they were sitting down here, not mine. He's on, on, always praying on wood.
John, thank you, Father. I pray the visions to the fight of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Here.
Mr. Paul Koenig?
Here.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Here.
Mr. Ronald Johnson? Mr. Jason McCray?
Yeah.
Mr. Pete Mills? Mr. Richard Oliver?
Here.
Dr. Kristi Oakland?
Here.
President Liskin?
He wants to prove the general opportunity. One, is that a wrong? Stop when it's introduced, of a power that we have. The training that we have. Grandpa, not performing use of land, is the...
What was the first?
That was...
Something like...
That was, they were telling.
Oh, yeah, oh. So good. Second.
Because of the Lord.
Why they endorse the poems on? Endorsed, now saying they endorse?
That would be good on the side. He's all not for...
For the town. For the front. The Queen, who ordered? In that Father's place?
Ah.
In a poem, what it is. Queen, so the general, adopted the medical rebellion twenty, twenty, twenty three, ready to meet. Everybody ready? He's a leader, I mean. You want to talk? Tell her, correct you. There's a test. Queen, the Pope, the Pope is there?
Ah.
In a poem, what it is. Look here. The Queen, Lord, service the equal day at eighty-five, ninety-three hours, nine, sixty-three. Not to do that. On the other day, you'll be glad to hear it, it's the next day.
Yeah, we got a request that, uh...
Put it right.
Sir?
I need put it right.
Introduce yourself.
William Jarrett. Uh, requesting, uh, a loss parents for, uh, an event that we want to have, hold on, the twenty, uh, twenty-seventh of, uh, January.
What kind of event?
Basically, just, uh, just we'd rather come out and bring out the horses and just celebrate and, uh, bring in, uh, New Year, uh, at the parade, that, uh, just horses and everybody show up to animals. And it's open to the public.
Now, what you doing with horses, the stuff you got, you doing?
So you mean?
On the other court, the court, right? He can hear that, he called it, he did it with horse. That I recall, Father. So what, what kind of, of noise?
We, because I remind me of the president, also, because we don't play music and pretty much enjoy ourselves while we're out there.
They build a law, a law concerning, now, your...
Correct.
And, you know, we've had complaints in the past about this music, this burning flavors, and if y'all don't have music, then they're gonna moderate it up.
Correct.
And you can't, you pray that we can hear them a mile down the road.
Correct.
But I think if we give a noise ordinance, a variance to a noise ordinance, I think if the neighbors call the police, they're not even gonna block it. Because at that point, the sheriff office gonna say, y'all ain't a noise ordinance, we don't have nothing to enforce. What I think?
I'm sure they'll be back. And if, you know, if you all decide to, they don't do what they're supposed to do, that's too much.
But if we give a variance to the noise ordinance, then there's nothing to do.
Yes, that's the focus.
They'll have what I'm saying, they'll be back again, I'm sure, or another...
I look at the, the last time, they do come out.
Well, last time, we didn't give a variance, so basically, what...
Well, I've committed in the past, they do come out. They come out and they, they, uh, ask them to go, they do come out.
Correct.
With, with, with the noise.
And they don't give a variance then.
They did the variance, uh, at the last...
We are very... We prayed when you rang.
We didn't, we didn't give any variance to any noise ordinance. And not since I've been on this jury, we've never issued a noise ordinance there.
And I have a question. I might have heard your date wrong, did you say the twenty-seventh?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I see January eleventh on our...
That was the typo, that was the typo I had.
So it is the twenty-seventh?
Yes, ma'am.
And did I hear you say that it's after the parade?
Yes, ma'am.
That's gonna be the parade that's to be held in Clinton, that parade?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the Martyrville Parade is what we're talking about? Is there another parade?
No, I don't know when, I know it's on the twenty, I'm not sure when the parade is.
Oh, okay, I thought you said it was after the parade.
I don't have sure when.
I mean, I... So it's not the eleventh, just the twenty-seventh?
Like, if not, if not, based around what you book, it's always, you don't, you don't need a, a variance.
True. Like, because like you say, we, we're not afraid of blessing, using tactics. You know, and if, if, he's not part of God, you know, unless they're right. You know, but, well, we are not out there to disturb our neighbors. You know, and, and if, and we talked in the past about a destination music, if anybody in, in town got destination, they're more than welcome to come out there and break.
Yeah, yeah, but you haven't been...
We have some.
Sheriff's office.
Right, I'm saying they more than welcome to come out there and verify the north, you know. And if anybody come out there, sheriff come out there and say the music's too loud, out of respect for our neighbors, we'll turn it down.
What you doing, you not doing a prayer? Trying to help them, you know, I'm saying. What did you, as not can, who can do this?
I'm, I'm gonna make a question, um, that we, um, do not, um, grant, or request, that we deny the request. For the variance.
All right.
Demonstration, I have an audience. Let's go. Sleep soon.
Good afternoon, my name is Deborah Holmes, and I live in the subdivision over there, where we're just gonna have this, um, gathering with the horses. We had a, a problem with the traffic the last time, we couldn't get in or out to our homes. And that was a problem. If they have somebody get sick, or having an ambulance come through there, they were not able to come in. And that's a problem. Also, we have small children that come and visit, and that live over there. And we don't know the people that's coming in to this party, or the event that they're having, that is they're gonna be bringing guns, or have something on that would cause harm to us over there in that subdivision. So this is something that we need to think about before we allow this to happen.
Yeah, we have security, right?
Yes, we will have private security.
What about coming in and out of the subdivision? We have a problem getting in and out.
It's a problem, you say, for coming and for getting in and out? I don't think we would never have, to most of the people we had on the coast, should be there, even? I don't know, that, that would have happened, don't think it would have happened. I'm not, I'm not trying to talk about it. I would, yeah, I don't know, I would look for shit, I don't think. We don't care if it creeped at one time, if all the country comes in, or he... You did it without, without a call, you cannot reveal the address.
Okay, I will call. And, and I'm... Okay, so you've got private security coming in, are they gonna do, I mean, unfortunately, there was an event Saturday...
Happened Saturday.
That brings a lot of things up. Is your security gonna do any checking or anything, or, you know, how are you going to keep it secure of having the people come in? I mean, I don't know, how are you gonna do that?
I mean, we can't search, we can't, we... So, what, I mean, we do have signs up, saying no weapons allowed, according to equal law, we got all the signs up that are supposed to be up for agricultural property when you have events, so we got everything that's supposed to be posted, we have that posted.
Okay, so is this event advertised for local, I mean, I know you can't say who's coming and who's not, or is that an event with New Orleans for these people, or?
This is a local, this is this local, a local event?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Yes, sir, uh, turn your mic down.
Uh, you know, my name is Kenneth Bates. When you plan an event like this, y'all have a contingency plan. What is a contingency plan? A contingency plan is, if something happens, you gotta have emergency on standby. Can't the sheriff's department handle, handle this, this event too? I mean, how many deputies gonna be out there? I work security, and I know how, how to get things in. What I'm saying is, you gotta have a contingency plan. Say, we call, y'all shoot, how many ambulance you gonna stand by? Is people pay for it, parishioner pay for it, public juror pay for it? Because you can't say never, something gonna happen. You can't say that, but, in an event like this, you have to have a contingency plan. The police gotta have a plan, ambulance service gotta have a plan, there's a big shoe, it's fourteen, what hospital you gonna transform to? San Fransfield Hospital, Zackner Hospital, can't they have a shoot? All these hospitals can anticipate this. Protect, y'all go protect and serve.
Protect and serve.
Protect and serve, but, you gotta have a contingency plan. Is it, what hospital, somebody gets shot, what hospital are you going to? The hospital, this, I work, I work, I know what I'm talking about. Is, blame the earth on the handling of the shooting car. You can have the doctor, you can send a doctor there. Do San Frans, they have the doctor, send a doctor there. All this gotta be a plan, so we're talking about having fun, but you gotta have a case, something happen.
Listen, you got to be, uh...
I'm just...
Not to be a pastor, it's not be good enough. Not only keeping him right now, with the practice, we don't have a chance to pass a law from this, or shoes on right now. We cannot, we cannot plan it, we don't know what to have.
But you knew about the event. You knew about the event.
Everybody, they didn't also...
No, but you knew about the event.
You know about it, huh?
Because, yeah, because same first is, if I'm the one that gets shot, I'm gonna say, hey, y'all knew about the event, y'all should have had that on standby to check. It's not like you didn't know about it, man, you don't know how many people's coming. But what I'm saying is, you got to have a standby. If I get shot over there, what hospital I'm gonna be transferring to?
That's up to the ambulance service today, you can't determine that. I mean, you can have a basketball, a football game, you got an ambulance service that's on, on call, working for self.
You're talking about a lot of people.
And the hospitals have a plan for mass, uh, capture, that's part of their standard operating procedure, so I'm near what we would do.
And then, like I said, it's one way in, one way out. And then the last time, you got music, you gonna have people coming out of this, I got it, I'm gonna say, I'm bumping, 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 bumping music. You think I'm gonna hear all that, all that, all that music coming out of this? No, I don't wanna hear all that curse music and stuff, I'm in the subdivision, I'm on peace. You don't worry about your house?
We do not.
No, hold on, can't, do you worry about your house?
We didn't allow, I can't prevent it.
No, do you worry about it? Yes or no?
I may not even want it, it's not good enough. But if the laws are there to do, we cannot prevent it, that's why.
I'm not preventing, I'm not talking, I'm talking about music, I don't want no laws.
They playing music, don't pray to law, we cannot prevent it, we got...
We got a laws already.
We got laws already.
Okay, you want to call?
How we calling it, you willing to force it, or, that what we do?
Look, like I say, you got one way in, and one way out of this. Just after here last time, I told y'all, I was here last time, this stuff happened, and, uh, hustling, whatever, everything I say can't true. In, in this meeting, I told you.
I'm not a prophet, I'm not...
I'm not promising, I'm, I'm, I'm secure. I know, I'm secure, I'm in security for thirty-seven years. And he got, he got, look, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna be straight, I'm gonna tell you. He got people out there that don't give a heck, they gonna shoot somebody, they gonna shoot somebody. I worked with those damn days for thirty-seven years, they told me that, man, I don't care who's standing by, when I really get you, I'm gonna get you.
Like, you know, but in the church house, I don't, I don't know why, I was, if you gonna get it, you gonna get it.
But I don't know...
You cannot prevent that.
But you in the something. You did that for thirty-seven years, forty years, you did that for forty years for bill, I'm gonna pay for it? And then, and then I, all peace and quiet, I don't hear all this, you know, I've worked, I've worked forty long years to pay for my house, to have peace.
And, and look, the jury did their job tonight. They asked for, uh, a waiver for other noise orders. The jury says no. At the point, it's protect and serve, that's not the responsibility of the jury. Protect and serve will be our sheriff's office. And with us not giving the noise ordinance variance, now the neighbors can call and the police can go.
You couldn't shut me down, but...
Because if we would have gave that, you would have no noise ordinance. So there would be nothing to enforce for that day, in that timeframe, there would be no ordinance.
Okay, so if the crowd get, so I can't get on myself to this, I, I can tell y'all, right?
The sheriff's office.
The sheriff's office. They get record then, that's what I told you.
Can I ask Mr. Ruth, uh, Tony Richon, when y'all have events out at the Ag Center?
Yes.
How many horses and trailer show up, do you think?
Oh, varies, anything?
You can't, you can't, you don't know. You know what kind of...
I, I, I'll just let it, let it come up, you know.
It could be a half dozen, it may be fifty. You don't know that.
I mean, I just...
You might have two or three roping, or two or three hundred teams that come in to do, uh, steer away.
You know, you just get a field for a number, you know, I mean, it ain't no big five hundred. Probably signify at the most. I meant at least this, this here, it, it may not be but twenty, twenty-nine.
Yeah, but is it advertised on Facebook or anything? I don't know.
Did you advertise on Facebook?
Yeah.
So it's not on social media?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not here yet, is she going to? Or are you going to?
Uh, maybe, yeah.
Okay. Let me ask another question that might alleviate some concerns. Do you have a plan for getting your people in there and parking? Because the roads was a problem, so, do you have a way you're gonna park them?
Yes, we, we have someone, uh, we have a parking attendant, yes. The last time, we did have parking attendant, so people was just parking everywhere. So it was a problem because everybody was talking to the front and nobody was parking to the back. So this time, we have someone there to show them where to park, so we're gonna park from the back.
Okay, so what happens if the parking, if the cars start getting backed up on the road? And, and, you know, some of their questions that...
Okay, so...
If you, if you have a plan, would you tell us?
Okay, if it gets backed up on the road, we do have contingency parking to try to get them off the road. Uh, we have the lot up on the front, and that belongs to the Franklin's, we have that lot. And we realized that, that lot going into the subdivision is also part of ours. So we gonna park in there as well, to get people off the road as fast as possible, and then they can walk in there, instead of drive down in there.
They're gonna be walking on the road, ain't no, ain't no sidewalk, so if they fall, the Franklin, they gonna be walking in the middle of the highway.
Okay, but we could...
If they fall into our subdivision, you, uh...
That is not just subdivision.
Into the subdivision, why they lock something up? This day, this day locked, and this is subdivision locked, five feet apart. So they're gonna be coming into our, our subdivision, so we can let it get out. I, I should, I broke the map.
They cannot, they cannot walk on private property, they walk on your property.
No, I'm not talking about private property. Look, again, you said, Mr. Kenny, you said it was local, she said she would put it on Facebook.
I said I might, don't put it on that word.
You can't be my, you're gonna put it on Facebook, yes or no?
Like I said, I said I might don't put it on.
I always do, like, if that thing was might have...
Let, let him have, are you advertising this as an event for horses?
Yes.
And, and it's not a, it's not a music festival, it is, it's a horse operation.
That's correct.
People ride the horses.
That's correct.
Facebook or not?
I cannot pick it up from my...
That's, that's the most popular means of communication, I mean.
Yes or no?
That's the world you live in, everybody gonna post up and put it on social media, you can't stop that.
I'm not trying to stop, last time was so, you see what happened? People came off of New Orleans and everywhere, you my opposing jury, you know. They came from New Orleans and everywhere, I'm talking about, they came from...
We can't sit up and suspect.
I'm not...
Don't wish for the worst, just try to trust, see, let them have it, if it don't work out, well, you know what's gonna happen. They gotta come back here again.
I'm not coming back. I'm trying to say, is it gonna be on Facebook, yes or no?
I cannot prevent it.
Okay? Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna show you like this, the parking, this driveway, you got one, I do got one way in, one way out. When you come into this, this Gerald's lot, that's what I'm talking about, when, then, people outside of there right there. So when they start coming in, that's the same way we got to come out. So if you fall there, you know we're gonna be locked in.
Not necessarily.
We're not gonna walk in.
We got locked in last night?
We're not gonna walk in, bro.
You just said you was gonna use that, there's a lot of... You off the ground.
We're gonna use the ground, not the road.
She said she had a plan, and then knock on the door, the driver, and...
We have not...
I gotta take over, we're, we're gonna get the goods in, and so forth, and we gotta take people where?
Be careful with the map, though, I'm talking about, the map will shoot you, I'm talking about, I broke the map to the full, jury. I blocked the map. And then you talking about parking over that track, and when you fall over there, how they, you gonna have the people walking in the middle of the highway, that's not sure.
And you walk all through town when you have stuff, don't you?
That's not sure.
You walk through town when you have stuff, right?
We understand, we understand, we understand, it's a... You got, you got four or five weeks advertised that people gonna have, we better pray, protect the prayer well up. We cannot prevent this from happening.
I'm not trying to prevent it from happening, I'm trying to say, you say it was local, Mr. Kenny, I, that came out trouble. You said, you told us just now that this was gonna be local, whatever, and the law, I ain't got no problem with it.
I can't look up.
Or you say it's local?
I didn't tell the law, she put it up, I didn't tell the law.
You say it's local?
The law's gonna be misunderstood, I'm sorry, I'm gonna... I cannot tell nobody, convince they come, but they're who they can convince they come, I swear, even, I can, we can...
All I'm saying is, if, if you, if you put it on Facebook, Facebook, and you advertise New Orleans and everybody else, you know the picture, you, you gonna, a hundred people's gonna come. But you let know, like, I mean...
I'm not gonna do that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm saying, you say it's gonna be local, if it's local, I ain't got no problem being local. There's no problem with it being local, I don't care about local, but when you advertise stuff, you don't know who gonna come from New Orleans and all that, you don't know what kind of people coming through there. You running all kind of trouble in here.
I think you go to...
I tell you what, it's just gonna be on your head.
On my head.
That's right.
And Mr. Home, may I ask one more question?
God takes a long way out.
Are you charging admission? Yes, ma'am, okay.
We are called to approve and rule the regulations for the past, we are not the police, we are not, we're not a force, we're not, we're not attacking...
Well, the last thing is, Kenny, you say, you say they can't charge for coming in.
They can't tell me to do...
You say, uh, she said charge.
According to the Louisiana equal law, we can charge, thank you.
We, you got a court, you, that's the equal law?
According to Louisiana equal law, we can charge. The state authorized us to charge.
So, you say they travel, you're right, but my concern is, did you say last time, how much trouble I can't? Did you see the noise when people come, with the cars bumping, jumping? Did you see the people on the highway, did you see the trash was left on the subdivision?
Excuse me.
It was terrible.
We cleaned that up the very next day, we cleaned that up. The trash is there, I'm talking about on the road, I have a video as well, that trash is on that road already.
I'm talking about into the subdivision while I was there.
We walked that subdivision and cleaned, I mean, we walked that road and cleaned it up, Mr. Kenny.
We all just pray for nothing, Junior. You know, we don't get, no, no understanding. We're a bitch, I'm, we got a law that's bad, and it was not red.
Okay.
If you break the law, he will come and shake you down.
Okay, thank you.
So, my, my last question, I'm just gonna down, Facebook or not?
I don't know, I don't, I don't even have a Facebook.
Mr. Gerald, don't, I'm talking this on Facebook or not?
It's a possibility, yes, sir.
It's a possibility.
Thank you.
If you put it on Facebook or not, if I tell somebody, they can text somebody, it ain't gonna be, either way, it's...
You asked my question.
I know, you know, you know. That both of us are, we have to, great to them, to know us, that, all the faith, it's on the power. And that the greater calling of, of the shit of their, of our, that the greater love. And that's the hour of love, I think, and share with them for us to love, that's the power of love. The question, if, oh, oh, my time, if I was doing something wrong, I'm sorry, if I was doing something wrong, I'm gonna go back with the law, and I'll have to do this. I don't make the law, and we make this one, and that one.
Have y'all gotten y'all permit for this adventure?
Not yet. We was waiting for the noise parents, we was gonna apply for the permit.
So if it makes you guys feel any better, they have to come back and apply for a permit. And I doubt all their...
Excuse, they told, oh, when I came in, I went for the noise ordinance, they told me we didn't need permit.
For a special net permit, don't we have to?
No, they said it's because agriculture, because it's agriculture. They said because it was agriculture.
And we don't, they're already authorized us to have it. But you got horses involved, according to equal law, we can have this again.
And you're not gonna steal that?
Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
What statue is that equal statue, do you know off the top of my head?
Uh, not off the top of my head, no.
Would you please, for that, everybody, please, Jerry?
Please, we like...
Not a problem. And the only other question I have is, how do you do horses from five-thirty to eleven o'clock at night without lights? Do y'all have lights over the whole place now?
We have lights, uh, from get turned off. They already posted all over the place, we do have to do thirty days in advance with, uh, for them to turn them all on. But lights pretty much on seven o'clock, seven o'clock. That's already, energy already put them up, but, who, who you got to give them? They've got, they've already got like thirteen lights for the prop, and they've already put a...
So it's gonna be a riding event, not a music dancing, carrying on, it's gonna be riding?
Yes, well, yes, ma'am.
If we think that in college shit, we wouldn't force that, we probably wouldn't have it coming on. Yeah, I don't call it, hey? Thank you, you're welcome, thank you. Mr. Chandler, you're speaking the way it's from, you come with...
Hi, Joey Johnson, West Brooklyn, our office is over there on my own, I'm in Baton Rouge. I just wanted to come and say hello, and I'll introduce Joey, he is our new division manager, and he will be handling operations of the, of the parish in the area. And I believe he and Ms. Taylor Kane, she's gonna be the new person that's supervising East Cusiana specifically. And she'll be checking in at the parish, appear at the office once a week, make sure everything's going, that's clean. If you have any questions, I think Joey gave everybody a card, you can talk.
I have the... No, I have, I have a card. And before Mr. Joey, um, started, I do want to say that we did it last one, we had a great weekend. Um, I am confident that things will change with ways of, that's probably, we had some, um, calls right after that, I think it was Wednesday. It went to Thursday, and as soon as we, we, um, got those calls, we have two people now that we contacted about everything. I think that helps, he is one of those people, he's included in different email, and they've been able to take care of everything right away. I know we had lots of problems, and I'm sure you all, uh, give them a chance, we gonna let them know all of that too, I told them to keep paying the pay. But we had a great weekend.
So, for my statement, it's part of the job of making local in the program, that you do five, and you, local for the hardest of the ladies.
Yes.
Um, and the lady that is working with him, y'all hear me say, I don't have very many problems out on that route that I have. She used to be one of the drivers on my route. That's probably a good sign. So, she knows the players.
Yeah, she's been in parish for, ever since we got the contract. And she's moved up, so he promoted her a few weeks ago, and now she's been a leader.
We've been having a lot of problems knocking my parish, so on the ground, building areas, we're good road, we hope we're just coming over.
Definitely, if there's anything that you have, it's great to meet Taylor, looking at her, she was working so hard, she tried.
She's, um, one of the residents, also, her life, we, they did, they did, they taking care of it with the, they, some of the areas, they had to change. Because of issues like the old bridge.
And the bridge will be open, we want it pretty soon, so we're getting, getting rid of that problem too, we just about completed the bridge, um...
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna put the railings up on the side, it's gonna now.
Taylor's set off in the route, so now you shouldn't have that problem off.
Okay.
We put the, we put the work with you.
As a part of work, well, you got.
I just...
She shares, and when I started the work, because we wanna hear from you to share some of the things that, you know, we gonna be physically are, we're working on to improve the, the works of the...
Sorry, I think I, I, I'm trying to speak clearly. Um, services traditionally, pretty good in our area, fifty-six. Uh, I will say, week of Thanksgiving was lackluster, uh, some streets and roads were worse than others. But what I have heard from the people in that area is they would like a little bit more information, maybe a personalized mailer, uh, that says something about how to store their garbage and put it in the road appropriately. I've gotten a lot of questions and concerns, it's still, like, this New Year's down the road, in the contract, confusion come out, what can be put there, how to package it, where to place it, proximate to roadway, et cetera, et cetera. So if there's something we can publish officially, that I can write and send out.
Yeah, um, we, we can surely do that, I was trying to think, um, that's what, you guys don't do any mailouts to everybody in the parish?
Twenty-two thousand people here, we're not spending that much.
Okay, um, you're welcome, too, they know, I'm trying, you know, sometimes if, if they sit up on bills, then we can put a little insert in the barcode or anything like that, so that's what I'm, I'm running through on.
It's maybe something that we could get with the sheriff with, and we've made a proper endeavor with you guys, because he would be the one with the tax rolls, sending out the tax, for property tax. That would be able to hit everyone.
I'll report that.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that would be the best route, because we have seventeen different water districts.
Maybe we can work with them, appreciate it, in some way, I don't know what other entity we could come up with, perhaps, still.
At, at this point, you, you're deep enough into the contract, and then where we stand at this point, it would probably time to have a discussion and actually change to the automated trucks with the cans, that maybe the discussion you don't have at that moment.
Yeah, we can talk about that, some of our roads didn't facilitate that very well, and something, we'll be landing on that, and discuss it later. We can...
Yeah, the cars?
Yes, but, uh, we can discuss that, we definitely need to...
Because that would be, that would be a step in of, the, the, I, I watch those guys, that, that, that automated process is like...
Of course, when you tell people that, um, they have a limit, a bigger limit on their trash, with automated...
That young man would fit ten of us in.
It was something that he's working on as well, um, with the call center, with the, with the call center, um, you know, whenever someone would call the call center, he may get someone in New Orleans, wherever they're getting these different things, telling you different things that's actually done in these Louisiana pet beds, um, that doesn't, we don't do that, you know, so that's something else.
So that is something that you asked me about Thursday, and, uh, we're going to work on getting the number directed just to the Battington facility. I've already talked to customer service, and I hope to have the numbers finalized next week. And the call will only come to Battington, and if, for some reason we don't answer, it'll automatically go to a voicemail, and then we will retrieve that voicemail and call it back. So that you're not getting your calls directed all over, so we can...
Yeah, that's what normally would happen, was it would, it would go to our backup facility, which may be E Geismere, or in Homa, or in Kenner. So it would go to one of our other facilities that's in this area, but, you know, would go outstate, but it would go somewhere in this area, so, and then they all aren't training on this facility, this specific contract. So that's where some of the conditions is.
I should have that worked out next week, I'll be back with you guys, we'll have to verify that, and we're hoping to keep it in the same form of our sure account, to just stop it from overflowing to other locations.
You will find them?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, Mr. Chang, putting this on the agenda, but I don't wanna take up y'all's time and eye on this. But I do wanna revisit this in January, February, talk to y'all about it from the new jury seat, so, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Chang.
A doctor have twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-one.
That should be twenty-two, twenty-four, so it's a...
Twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-one.
So, uh... Yes. We're gonna addition that in the hall.
Yeah, I'll say that.
Okay, um, the holidays, oh, you said meeting day, sorry.
I said holidays.
Oh, holidays, okay, so the holidays were, we get the last minute, I mean, at the last meeting, but the, I believe in March, we may have had the twenty-first or something there, and it should be the twenty-eighth. You all approve, um, the...
Second.
Approve the call twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-one immediately.
I'll second that. Y'all need that one more.
We have, we have a lot more plans to be here.
All the things?
Uh-huh. That's for all, uh, taxes and stuff.
Approve R F P, F time, three minutes. That's a three, one, you got?
Yes, so...
Second.
The expression, twenty-one, you know the thing? Approve R F P, F time, for most benefit, solid for it.
So...
The expression, twenty-one, you know the thing?
Uh-huh.
Approve R F P, F time, rebound, you know, for...
One move.
Second.
All the things?
Uh-huh.
Okay, regulations to free, uh, point the gas, if you're gonna go, we turn the five, seven, twenty, twenty-five. Come over here.
We got two cameras.
We got two cameras.
We have, we have...
Um, there's two, um, two days.
The thing is, you know, two, two days, we can work to, to, to...
One, two, one, two, nine, ten. I might go, so we're set for...
Seven.
Twenty-one, you know the thing?
Uh-huh.
Do you really hate them?
Yes.
We don't want them to...
Can we do the, the function, for the personal deterrents in?
Okay.
So, twenty-two, twenty-five would be, um, there for you.
There for you.
Y'all go to twenty-two, twenty-five?
Yes.
The standard, right?
Yes.
Second.
The expression, twenty-one, you know the thing?
Uh-huh.
You know, come, what you can, this time you get, tell them.
One move.
Second.
What time would be?
Twenty-two, twenty-six. And those are gonna be your...
Tell, get your own, the other.
Some, yeah.
Tell.
And those are the three quarters for the, um, leash.
It's a double group, twenty-three, and a ten, twenty-four. It's a five-minute board. The expression, all the things?
Uh-huh.
You know, come, what you can. Looking to free up, uh, the point on the deck, you know, work with, turn the five, twenty-one, twenty-two.
No, this is, I don't, I don't...
Thank you, thank you.
We do, sir.
I got the deal. Free dog, um, you can say it.
Me. What I would like from the jury is our dog ordinance covers dogs. We have absolutely nothing in our ordinance that covers cats at all. I would like to add the word cats to our dog ordinance, and that's it.
And the word and.
Dogs and cats.
Should we use the line instead?
Whatever we need to do, uh, there's a nuisance cat, and I can't call and do anything, because there is no ordinance that covers it. So I would like you to add the verbage and cats.
I was going more for cat, but I don't know, why cat, it wasn't...
Over here?
Yes, please, and you said, twenty-one, you know the thing?
Uh-huh.
You know, come...
Thank you all very much.
Okay, yeah, that you know, it does not be ordered, and planning, uh, you know. That's clear, when this, the grandpa, the uncle, for the use of name instruction. Just it, um...
Oh, yes, um, we would like to be placing on the agenda, any of your tanks, you have a package of additions? That we would like, and that we would establish that you continue the operation for one continuous six-month period, if you all would advertise it for over here.
I got that, for introduction, that's what I'm saying, you're working on that.
Okay.
The car, start?
Okay.
The expression, twenty-one, you know the thing?
Uh-huh.
You know, come, you can...
Can we do both, expecting meeting in, um...
On January?
January.
Twenty, twenty-four.
I have three things. Uh, number one, I'll make the motion on three monthly invoices. Frankly, as a motion.
The expression, twenty-one, you know the thing?
Um...
You know, come, what you can.
Second thing is, the corner bill at Town of Clinton is still not being paid. I would like to turn that over to the DA, and let him do what he needs to do, to solve this matter.
Problem, the problem, this is a pretty one, you know, the two.
Yeah. Second.
It has been taken over to the DA, and you all would like, has it, since it's court?
Yes. I just didn't want that decision by myself, and I'm a child, where it is, it might be stupid.
It really pay off, has paid their obligations, and...
I feel like it's not, only, only one is not, it's easy to pay it. Okay. All the things?
Uh-huh.
You know, come, what you can. Okay, the car, what you...
Last thing I have is the twenty-twenty-three salary adjustments, and I'd like to make that in a motion as well. These are the adjustments for the, uh, Portland's comp rebates.
We didn't pay us, we didn't do some... Wait a minute, is that like we did last year?
Yes, sir.
So we rolled it back to the employees?
Yes, sir.
Give them a word.
We did have a lot of discussion on that last year, and, and I, I just, myself, I mean, I'm not against giving employees a raise, we're giving them a raise. I, I just, I just think that's, myself, I'm against that.
Well...
I think that needs to roll back in, to next year's budget, roll it back in the bank account, pay it against, pay it against the next year, you just gotta keep rolling that.
And, and, and I agree with you somewhat, but when you look at the cost of living, and it's at sixteen percent, we're giving our employees less than a five percent raise, this is an incentive to keep you guys here.
That's just my opinion, y'all do what you want to.
And my twenty-twenty-three salary adjustment is a motion.
So...
You think, put it as a motion?
Yes, exactly. The water's good. I feel as though, they're... It's one, one, one thing yet, and come, whatever we did.
How many years have we done this?
We got a twenty, twenty-eight year.
It's been in the Senate, that we've given our employees, we able to do it, I thank y'all.
We have dedicated, yeah, we have dedicated employees, we, we can lose them. I just feel, you get a word, it matters, you done good, y'all, you feel that, you do good.
Um, I have a question. Um, what happened, Mr. Hall, when the finance committee asked that all overtime not be you, you know, we didn't use overtime as much as we were using it, did, did our employees comply with that, or did we use a lot of overtime?
We used less.
Only the overtime, it's still by Arthur, they cannot do overtime on their own. You have to, you have to come to the school. You can't come, you know, with ten hours, twelve hours, you cannot do that.
The only thing they've been working overtime in the past year is if they were called out, and if we had some kind of burden issue, something, like on the root road bridge, they have done some overtime on there, that's putting them down, that's one.
Another call...
So do we have a better handle on it than we had before?
Yeah.
Since the previous parish manager left, it is a lot better, but I have not, I can't answer honestly, because I have not responded to one.
She did, I remember.
It has not been what it was.
Now, look, I'm gonna be a team player, and I'm gonna second the motion, and I would see this next year, I, you know, I'd like to...
There you go.
I do know that, um, motivators, um, that we haven't had all of them, because we had one that's been out, um...
Yeah, but that's...
Just to prove vibe, yeah, to work when they can, or if we can, um, personally, like, if they had to prove from, um, these, but, just, nothing, just because I wanna work overtime, or if I miss work, I don't make a day. Just nothing, just because I wanna work overtime, or if I miss work right on a negative day.
So we have a better handle on it than we had before?
Yeah, I'll replace them.
Don't come to a meeting, uh find our stuff at the last minute, come before you ask.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. This was just brought up, it was just brought up.
The overtime was again.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. I'm just, we talked about Mr. Hall, saying if the overtime didn't stop, he was gonna have to pull it.
It was stopped.
He, he did, okay, he did say that, you know, I was just saying that I didn't agree with giving the money away last year. But I second the motion, all for your book, as long as we have it approved.
And, and I can mention with the LW, I mean, they does make, we have audits for LWCC, we have come in, they went to the yard, made sure it's been, you know, correct, and we have to be compliant with LWCC. So the employees, they, they have, I mean, they, we haven't had, in, in those years. We haven't made any earnings.
Well, workers' comp, we pay the workers' comp, the taxpayer pays workers' comp.
That's correct.
And so employees don't pay workers' comp, the jury, the taxpayer pays the workers' comp. And so many employees don't understand how social security, how all this stuff works, and that what they do pay and what they don't pay. And that's.
If those don't understand, they don't have to deal with it.
Do we have any employees about our opponent this year?
One that retired. Um, you talking about that D W?
Anyway, you, you gonna get worse, I'll check that everybody that's an employee, employment, so if they left.
No, twenty twenty three.
Probably everybody's worked all week here.
And that's a work thing, because that, coming from the, that has not been done in a while. So I thank you all for that, because a lot of it I do believe had to do with the um raises that you, that it's, yeah.
We took, we took the call there, we flew away from our there, we paid our performance, you know, you're there, I don't hear it.
I did think about that, no one has.
Yeah, but what you put in, we not want to perform. Like we, we don't want to.
You buy another new truck, I haven't seen it.
Uh.
Can't hide, you can't hide.
I would, I would feed y'all, I would feed y'all every day, that one day, I do that, feed y'all.
Give me a go ahead, hardest working man that I know for his age. He's found you old. I wish I could work half as hard as you. Pass out me conference, but I mean.
Wait, I don't think you took the vote.
How we working, who's getting covered? I'm doing it on the Karoo Brook Bridge.
We were just, we were waiting on the votes to come in and put the revelers on the side, and they came in and picked those up last week, and, and they did pick them up. It rained the next two days, so I think they started, they were supposed to start back this morning. So we hoping to get those, the reveler put up, and then we get the state to come out and do the inspection.
Coming to Mr. Frost, because I asked him, probably he left, some stuff that just come in today. Well, uh y'all looks great, let's all have a nice Christmas. Has, did the gentleman come back, uh, did, did uh, uh, Mr. Williams, did, did he get with the, the quote back from the man that went to look at the, the uh lights from trees? Said somebody would be to look, see if it was an alternative, like you said, LED is his, and he was supposed to work that.
I'll check with him. Um, the light of the Christmas tree was, is, was postponed last Friday, will have it Friday at six o'clock. Um, you know that your, I have it written down, your ethics training and workplace harassment or that your team had not completed, they need, are completed over the year, got pissed, y'all stay on, is he leaving? They have a, don't y'all. And um the police jury, you all know the convention is coming up on the, at the first meeting, or before the first meeting, the jurors will, will take their oath. Yes, the DA's party is also on Friday.
So let me ask, can I ask a question while we're discussing this? Do I need to resign December thirty first? Bu- because if I go into the new year, where I have to do all the training and stuff again? So I need to resign?
No, no. We, we have like, I need, we need to have a board meeting. So your, but your acting tools needs especially.
Do you ever start way to the eight?
With the term expired, it's a different.
Okay, okay, okay.
We, we turn it on the different.
I thought it was.
We get the notice level.
It comes to the first week?
That's correct.
Well, Mr. Johnson, he gets paid.
They get paid different, we get paid the first and the last number, the last number we get paid.
I'm paying that, but his term doesn't expire.
Yeah, we're getting paid, we're getting paid for the free weekend, we got, we want to go, we not get paid.
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have to do all the training and all of that stuff.
Unless you work a little week, I'm gonna say it's that, you not get paid for that, for that, for that season yet.
I think it's fine with you.
It might be certain, you might want to look into it.
I haven't worked before.
I just don't want to get, I, I, you know, we get a.
Our regulars write you a bad, they can't give you a better term, unless you go pay.
And, 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 and I don't want to be paid, so if that's the case, then, yeah.
But you have your.
Yeah, I don't want to have to do the financial disclosure and all that stuff. I might have to, I might have to, it's not gonna be very difficult. I'm probably gonna sit there and wear it about this long. Yeah, I just want to make sure that I do write me a better class.
Is it that hard for you to do the ethics training? There's some reason deep down inside that I'm confused, because.
Be great. I'll do that tomorrow.
And you also received the um, your email for your petition.
I want to be with every juror, say, Mr. Hall is going to be the, he has to meet your obligation.
Now what?
Obligation, you met your, oh, thank you.
Oh, oh, okay. It was in the head, I'm just telling how many feet. Yeah. Hopefully short and sweet, uh we had to redo the EMPG twenty three grant this year, because Gosep, the form they sent out part wasn't correct. So we had Rush, he did it all done, luckily, we were the first parish to get ours redone and turned back in to a money. So we got a ninety three percent increase in money, and the twelve, uh, the twenty percent off share we have, we don't have to pay that. But we, we have a way, we met with them today, that we would do in kind stuff, so we won't come out of any pocket money on that. So we got a big increase with no out of pocket money being spent. Uh and everybody, I know they complaining about the rain right now, but we so glad the hurricane ban is over. And uh, but just for January, February, March, they predicted, hey, where we were so dry and hot this summer, we gonna be the extreme this winter, we gonna be wet, cold, and icy. So, hey, that's why I wanted to let y'all know, hey, gotta be prepared, because when we start icing over, y'all gonna be having sand in bridges and stuff like that. Because I got the deputy director working on the procedure now for what happened if we got real bad cold, where we did like a few years ago.
I heard about that.
Yeah, oh yeah, I got, Chris got the CD on that one on Fire Phone, and that is their phone. But uh that's all I got.
Okay, that is on, you got a recommendation of your court, do, regiment approval, Russell Daniel, yeah. Show the dividend two point seven hundred, you know, this is one, two, three, four, eight, nine, one. Because you got some kind of situation that it can't happen, so it's put in there, the regulations are two hundred and eighty eight to.
Jay.
Yes.
Somebody.
Mr. Michael Cheetham?
Yes.
Mr. Cal, Calvin again?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Ronald Johnson? Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Pete Mills? Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Christie Elquid?
Yes.
President Lewis King?
Yes.
I just wanted, I didn't get the list of the properties that's planned all the time, so.
It's on the map?
Yeah, it wasn't on that. I just need to look at Chris' list a second.
You're gonna see if yours is on there?
Yes, ma'am. It was approved.
It was approved.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, the public company, I have one. You can't use that before you come back. Like I said, it's been about, we've had a long time ago, we always agree, but we always like to parent it hard. You know, if he's not gone, you know, if he's really gone, he won't be forgotten.
I know this, y'all. You said I'm very good, fine, man.
I do?
Yes, well, thank you very much, I bet you never thought you'd say that.
I never do.
You heard that, like, I wish you'd leave.
I'm too bad.